Stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get started, Dr. B., you mentioned that you had something to share this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Bannenberg. Appreciate it. I just wanted to make a comment, a few comments, really regarding tonight's meeting. And tonight's meeting is very different, probably one of the most different ones in my career, easily. It's sad and frankly scary that we had to implement these measures with metal detectors in order for our board and staff and public to feel safe. At the last, at the last board meeting, it left many people in this room and our community shaken. There was a firearm present. It was mishandled by an attendee in the same room where minutes earlier dozens of Carmel High School students gathered to be recognized as state champions. And we're fortunate that the gun did not go off. It didn't discharge. And even more fortunate that we had highly trained school resource officers, and they were in position to take immediate action to secure that weapon and the individual who was possessing the firearm illegally on school grounds. In the past, our public comments have provided an opportunity for members of the community to speak face to face with elected officials charged with representing the families of Carmel Clay Schools and their role as school board members. However, that's not what we're witnessing now. It's clear there are people who are upset and angry in our community, and it is our practice to be available to discuss concerns and meet with individuals to listen and problem solve issues. But we cannot, what we cannot do is to continue this divisive anger, personal attacks that the board, teachers, and administrators are receiving via email, phone calls, social media, and during public comments. Now, it is not uncommon for different groups to try to influence public schools. That's gone on for years. In this, this past April, there was a coordinated group that claimed we were teaching critical race theory, which we are not, and calling for the dismissal of our diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. In May, hundreds of people showed up to demonstrate outside with predominantly high school students offering public comment, and they were advocating for the importance of equity and inclusion in our DEI officer. In June, speakers focused their efforts on masking policies and ensuring parental choice. And then last month, we all witnessed the coordinated and angry approach taken to highlight questionable books in some Carmel Clay Schools libraries. Now, to be clear, any parent who has a question or concern about a book or other educational materials, one email to a school principal or media specialist would bear the same result as public comment that we witnessed last month in our school board meeting. Since then, districts around the county and the state experienced the same coordinated approach. Now regarding those concerns, some of the books were not in our libraries, and those that were in our libraries are now under review and we're following our board policy. Now, everyone has the public, in the public, everyone from the public has the right, and more importantly, is encouraged to communicate with their school board members and the Carmel Clay Schools administration. We remain available to all of our families via email, scheduled meetings, or phone calls. However, please understand that from this point forward, we will not be responding if your communication contains personal threats, name-calling, or attempts at intimidation. These tactics are inappropriate, they are unproductive, and they set a poor example for our children. And I want everybody to understand, our children are watching. We support each of our amazing teachers and staff in Carmel Clay Schools. Their dedication and commitment to the students and families of Carmel Clay Schools will not be tarnished. These personal attacks online must stop. We're proud of the academic achievements and high standards of Carmel Clay Schools. The academic standards our teacher, of our teachers and the success of our students even in this past year included a record-setting 61 national merit scholarships and the highly prestigious Presidential Scholar. Our student achievements cannot be diminished by social posts or online negativity. Our commitment to the 16,500 students and families in our district has not wavered. Our academic standards and expectations remain high, and they have not changed. Our support of all students will continue. We will not be derailed or distracted from our mission. We weathered a pandemic storm last year by working together. Our dedicated teachers, staff, and administrators teamed with our incredibly supportive parents and community to make school happen for our kids. It took all of us working together, and that is the unity I hope will continue throughout this coming year. Now tomorrow's the first day of school, and it will not be perfect. The pandemic effects are, effects are still in force. We've encountered obstacles and challenges, but we are again extremely thankful for the efforts of people from every corner of our district and community to be able to get started and get this new year underway. So in closing, I want to wish everyone a fantastic 21, 22 school year, and we look forward to watching our kids learn, grow, and achieve just like they do every year here in Carmel Clay Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bannenberg. And thank you for sharing this message with our school community and the board. I do want to share that the board is very thankful to our Carmel Clay School professional educators, our administrators and staff, who work tirelessly to meet the needs of our very diverse student population. We are equally thankful for the positive relationship we have with our CCS families. I just want the community to know that our staff is committed to helping our students be successful in Carmel Clay Schools. I just completed a portion of the state mandated professional training that each of our educators must annually complete to protect our students. Took nearly four hours. Topics included bloodborne pathogen exposure, bullying recognition and response, criminal gang activity, the Carmel Clay School seizure training, cyberbullying, email safety, human trafficking awareness, restraint seclusion, and students experiencing homelessness, which unfortunately is very common. And it, it happens in Carmel Clay Schools as well. There are similar trainings for each of our employee groups, and I'm not sure that everybody in the community is aware of that. Our professional educators thrive on the positive relationships that they build with our students and with our families. And as a board, we feel very fortunate to serve alongside our families, helping to do our very best to serve our student population. So I thank you for your message, and we're going to get started with our meeting. First item on our agenda is appointments. The appointment of Indiana School Board Association's delegate, Indiana School Board Association Legislative Liaison. Dr. Bannenberg, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Each year, it's necessary for the board to appoint a board member to serve as the Indiana School Boards Association Delegate and Legislative Liaison. In January of 2021, the board approved Mrs. Leila Bannenberg to serve as the Carmel Clay Schools Indiana School Boards Delegate and Indiana School Boards Association Legislative Liaison until July 2021. They made a change in the term. So at this meeting, the board will appoint a representative to serve a July to July term. So the board recommends Mrs. Bannenberg to continue as Carmel Clay Schools School Boards Association Delegate and as the Legislative Liaison through July of 2022. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you very much, Dr. B. May I get a motion on the table?
Go move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Any discussion? Pam?
Yes, I just want to second and third and fourth that nomination because she has been doing an excellent job, has done a wonderful job of working with our legislators, talking to them about our schools, and helping them understand what public education is in the state of Indiana. And I admire her for that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam.
I also want to thank you, Leila, because I feel like a lot of times, the information you bring us is in an effort to ensure we are proactive when we're thinking about the future and how changes can impact us. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate those compliments. I wasn't expecting that. Seeing that there are no other comments, we're ready to take a vote. All those in favor of supporting Leila Bannenberg for the ISBA delegate as well as the Indiana School Board Association Legislative Liaison, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda, we have consent. In consent this evening, we have claims, payroll, and the personnel report. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing that there is no discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of supporting consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda, we have the start of school dismissal times. We're moving into action items. Into that, we turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. Before I start that, if we could, Dr. Oestreich, we'd like to introduce our newest administrator.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very excited to introduce to all of you Mr. Todd Fignolio, who is our new director of, Director of Facilities and Transportation here in Carmel Clay Schools as approved in tonight's consent agenda. Todd comes to us with many years of experience and proven performance in the architectural, construction, land development, and facility management sectors. He is an architect and previously worked with Callahan Associates. He was also President of Precedent Homes. In addition to that, he had held many roles with the Estridge Companies here in Carmel, including Vice President of Internal Operations, and most recently, he was Director of Properties and Facilities with College Park Church, which he was responsible for over 12 buildings in the Indianapolis area. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Todd Fignolio, who's sitting right in front of us in the front row. Thank you, Todd.
Well, Todd, welcome to our Carmel Clay School family. We're excited that you have decided to join our team. Then, with that, we are going to move into action. Mr. McMichael, you have the first 4.1. School start time and dismissal times.
Thank you. As the board, and I think the public in general is aware, we are experiencing a critical shortage of bus drivers in half for some time, but this year, it's truly gotten to a real critical situation. We are currently over 40 bus drivers short. That's in the context of about 180 that we would like to have. And even though we've worked many hours to maximize efficiency and also to attract bus drivers, we simply do not have enough students to transport, or enough drivers to transport all of our students in, in a two-route system, which is what we have had up until now. As a result of that, we're finding it necessary to run a number of what we would refer to as double routes. So the driver would run to bring, go pick up one group of kids and bring them to school, and then go back and do a second run. And so that, of course, takes more time, and so that results in the necessity of, of changing our bell time. And now, we have not changed the student day, so that we very much protected the instructional time of the student. But we are recommending that the elementary day would begin at, at, can't get the right numbers here, at 7:40. And currently, it's, and last year it was 7:50, so we backed it up 10 minutes. And then the middle schools would be at, roll down the screen here. There we go. Yeah. So, so the middle schools then would, so would start at 8:25 and be over at, at, end at 3:25. And then the high school would commence at 9:05 and, and be out at 4:05. And so we would recommend the board would approve these new bell times.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the new bell times?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Pam?
Yes, would you explain the process that we went through this year to try to recruit bus drivers? Because I know we, we went, we did a lot, and we were able to recruit more than we thought, but we're still short.
Yes, on the one hand, we were pleased with the efforts that were made and the response as a result of those efforts. But nevertheless, we still had, and continue to have, a number of drivers that resign or retire. And so the turnover is just exceeding our ability to keep up with that. We, we did a number of things this year. One, we, we had an event at Carmel High School Stadium Lot and referred to as Drive a Bus. And so we arranged to provide opportunity for any, really anybody that, that was an adult, you know, that wanted to try driving a bus in the parking lot. We arranged for that, and we had hot dogs and snacks and, and so forth. And we really had good response to that. And there was response also in terms of applicants, and we did pick up a few people as a result of that. We also, of course, we continued to advertise and so forth, but, but we also made efforts to work with our local media who, who included articles to the effect that we're short of drivers. And that actually helps a lot because our community does read, you know, the local media and so forth. And so that is extremely helpful. We also gave presentations to all of our employees and had examples and invited them to consider driving a bus, in some cases, in addition to the job that, that they have now. And opportunities to possibly drive in the morning and, and maybe just in the morning, and then go to their, their regular job. And possibly somebody else then would, would drive in the afternoon. So, and we picked up, you know, several employees that do that. I believe we still have at least five teachers. We started that last year and made that effort. And I believe we still have about five, five or six teachers that drive for us as well. And when we changed the bell times, that limited that opportunity because of, of the start and stop time of the school. But they're still able to drive in the morning or in the afternoon. Well, in the morning, I believe now. And so, so that was, made some positive contribution to the effort. So those are the, some of the examples of, of the efforts that we've made to attract drivers and, and, but it's just not been enough at this point.
Okay, will the routes or routes be adjusted? If we are able to hire bus drivers into the fall, I know it takes four weeks for training. But if we're able to hire bus drivers, will we be able to move those into positions so we can eliminate some of the double routes?
Yes. To put that in perspective, a few weeks ago, we, we had, I believe, 24 double routes at the elementary school. By the time school starts tomorrow, we will have less than 20, but I believe it's about 18. So, so just, just in a couple of weeks, things have improved. And, and what we're doing is, is we're, of course, compensating the existing drivers additionally if they drive additional routes. And in the form of a stipend, as opposed to just a recurring, you know, increase in their salary. So that if, if, as we're able to hire additional drivers and need less double routes, then, then we, we would stop the double route, and then we'd still have the funds to, to pay an additional driver. So it'll, the expense will kind of move from paying our existing drivers more money because they're working more and running more routes. And if that, if we're able to hire the drivers, then that will kind of slow down, hopefully go away. And then the, the money will kind of move over to be able to pay the new drivers.
So it's not a factor that we don't have the money to pay them. We just don't have the drivers to make the money that we have to pay them.
No, we would hire 40 drivers tomorrow if we could, and then, of course, have them trained and so forth.
Mike?
Well, thank you, Roger, for all that information. Thank you, Pam. Those were some of the questions I had. I just think it's important that everybody knows that the number of hours that were spent to come up with the best solution that we could to this problem that nobody wants to do. And I just want to thank the administrators and thank everyone in transportation because I know their job normally is not easy. And this was, you know, there's only so many, so much juice we could squeeze, and this is the best that we can do. So thank you.
Yeah, and if I could add to that, I would like to take this opportunity to commend our transportation staff. Gary Clevenger, our Assistant Director of Transportation Facilities, who's, who's the lead in transportation, and, and his assistants, one of which is Rob Yall, who's spent a lot of time with this. And I would tell you, these gentlemen are very conscientious, and they take this very personally. And, and it's, so the work's difficult, but it's also difficult for them to kind of respond to the complaints and the, and the criticism because if there was anybody that would like to provide transportation services, it would be our staff. Obviously, they would have no reason not to want to do that. And if there was, anybody had an idea that would solve the driver shortage, we'd certainly like to hear it. And of course, and they talk to their peers across the state. We've said before, this is not a local problem. It's, it's really a national problem, and certainly in Indiana, it's a problem. Some communities more than others based on just availability of, of individuals that are interested in, in doing the work. So, but it's, it's, it's very difficult in this community, and it's very difficult generally in Hamilton County.
Yes, so, yes, thank you to your staff. I also want to though, thank you, say thank you to our parents that are being flexible and willing to pivot because, you know, we, we recognize that this might present challenges. So thank you for your flexibility and openness. And thank you for our children being open to pivot as well. So appreciate that.
And I'd like to thank our bus drivers for stepping up. And as we've said in the past, the bus drivers are the first people that the kids see every day and the last people that they see every day. And their ability to say good morning and know the kids' names goes a long way to making that kid's day and starting school day right. So we are very fortunate for the dedicated drivers we have, and I just want to make sure that they know we care about them and to thank them.
I also have a question. In the past, we've had a staggered start time at each of our schools, elementary, middle, and high school, very far in the past. And then we shifted to the two, the elementary and the middle school, high school. Do you anticipate that we're going to keep this staggered tiered start time independent of whether we have bus drivers or not?
I would say in the foreseeable future, yes. It may look a little different next year. What, what we have now is what I'd call a modified three-tier system. And, and increasing districts are finding it necessary to do that. We don't like to do it because when you start elemen, in this case, elementary first, and then middle school, and then high school, it stretches out the day. And so it makes the elementary earlier and results in the high school going later. And, and for the young students, we don't particularly like it being too early. And the high school with after-school activities and so forth, we don't like it to be too late. And so, so it's not, would not be our first choice. And, but as I said, but it takes less drivers because they, now they can run three tiers instead of two. And so I believe, we will have that, I would believe, until, certainly until we are able to add more drivers. And it's just, we don't know when that's going to be. We, we know we've been short now for, we've been short for several years, but it's probably been three years, maybe four, that we were social, we literally just ran out of drivers. Before, we would, you know, get close, if too, too many people were absent and trying to fill for subs. But bus drivers, like teachers, you, you, you have, you can't just not, not have somebody to drive the bus unless you do things like we're doing. And so, so it's just, it's just been very challenging.
Thank you. Any other questions before we take a vote? Seeing no additional questions, all those in favor of supporting the new start and dismissal times for our 2021, 22 school year, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution setting minimum distance for no bus zones. Dr. Bannenberg?
Thank you. 4.2 is resolution for setting minimum distance for no bus zones. This is part of the recum, of the Indiana Code requires us to have this resolution in place in order to, to have those, what we're calling no bus zones. For background, Carmel Clay Schools Human Resources Department has worked throughout the spring and summer to hire additional bus drivers by hosting a community driver event, sorry for the repeat here, with media coverage, newspaper advertisements, and advertising on social media. CCS administrators, Transportation Department monitored the hiring throughout the summer. Weekly, up to August 2nd, 2021, it was determined that the shortage of 40 bus drivers would require the district to move to drivers handling three to four routes every morning and afternoon, modifying bell times and establishing no bus zones in an approximately one-mile radius around each school. Within the no bus zone, safety considerations and adjustments were made to accommodate busy roadways and intersections. Bus services provided within the no bus zone areas such as crossings where high, high-traffic roadways and areas with no sidewalks. So crossing guards are being provided by the school to safely cross high-traffic intersections that we are going to use. And then per Indiana Code, we are recommending the board approve the, this attached resolution setting the minimum distance for the no bus zones. And this is done, and it really, school by school. Some schools, you know, those no bus zones were, are smaller, and Roger could probably speak to it better than I can, but they did take a lot of care. They did not just draw a one-mile circle around the school. They went road by road and, and made the boundaries based on, you know, what's the safest possibilities there. And that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion on the table to approve the resolution setting minimum distance for no bus zones? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Pam?
Yes, I just want to thank the City of Carmel and our Police Department for helping us with our bus zones because we haven't had that before. We've always had the transportation for the kids to be able to pick, you know, who were in walking distance. So I'm just very glad that they partnered with us this year and really worked to help make those safe bus zones, no bus zones.
Any other questions or comments? Because I have a couple, but I typically go last. Okay, well, I will jump right in. First, thank you to, I guess, our SROs as well as the Carmel Police Department and our news networks. I do want to, a big shout out to our news networks because all day today, on every channel, there was some information about starting school and our walk zones and pictures showing where the safe crossing area is. I was very appreciative that that has been publicized to our community. My questions really stem to, does this resolution have an expiration date? Or is this, moving forward, we've identified this as a no bus zone? And so depending on our need moving forward, this will still be in effect?
That's correct. It does not have an expiration. And of course, we've been asked, how long will this last? And the answer is, I don't know. And, but it would, we would expect that it would take board action to change it. And so, and I would add to what's been said that we started with a one-mile radius and then looked inside of that. As, and so probably upwards to half of the students that live inside that circle will be provided a bus. Not because, well, they will be provided a bus because we have certain criteria. For example, we would not have a student that would, that the only way that, if they walked, they, they would have to walk across Keystone, for example, or Highway 31, and, and, and those kind of examples. And I want to emphasize that, that the no bus zone does not, should not assume that the administration or the school board thinks it's okay for, you know, your kindergartner to walk a mile and a half to school. What we're saying is, is we do not have enough buses. One, we do not have enough bus drivers to, to transport all the kids. And so it was necessary for us to make these types of changes. And then secondly, if the parent felt that it was, was safe and so forth for their student to walk, that's why we, we took out about half of the students in the first place because we did feel that it would not be. And so we wouldn't provide a situation where if the parent permitted their student to walk, that they would, most, everybody, I think, would agree that, that, that they would not be safe crossing a major highway, for example. Now, having said that, the other half of the students, any number of parents, we all will have opinions. And so that, that, those decisions are clearly subjective. And doesn't mean that every parent would, would agree that, I mean, just walking down a street, that may be busy, but if it has a sidewalk and so forth, understand as a parent that I, I might not feel that safe for my student. And, and, and that's why we're not, we're not expecting anything in terms of walking. We're just saying this is an area that, that we're unable to provide transportation.
Pam?
Yes, because of this, this may increase our car pools going into the schools. So what have we done to accommodate parents with carpool?
Well, a couple of things. One, historically, we, at the elementary level, we have not opened the buildings until 10 minutes. 10 minutes before the bell rings. And so, that, that result, has resulted in cars backing, lining up and backing up because many parents would want to be first in line so that they can go on with their, you know, work or whatever. And so, we have expanded that back till to 25 minutes before the bell rings, allowing a larger window then to drop the students off at school. And so, it'll be a little bit more of a drop-and-go kind of concept as opposed to everybody. Now, we'll be very careful and safe. We, it won't necessarily be just, you know, cars coming in and out or anything like that. But, but there'll be a larger window. So, some parents may, and some parents will, will see this essentially as a free before-school childcare program because they may need to go to work and they, you know, they couldn't drop, they couldn't wait till 10 minutes before the bell rang, particularly if it were 10 minutes later than it is now. But at 7:15, that might work for them. And that might be good for us too because they might drop off early and then somebody else might make much, you know, kind of spread it out. So, we're hopeful that, that will help kind of the line, if you will, help the parents and also help us so that we, it would be better for the school district too to not like have all the kids there at the same time, particularly if there's large numbers of them.
Parents will understand that their children could, if they get there early enough, like the first group of buses, they could possibly be eating breakfast.
Absolutely. We, and we, we expect that to be the case. And we've had, the breakfast program hasn't changed, but we will now have more students that will be arriving early and may take advantage of that.
I just wanted to just reiterate the importance of continuing to partner with the city, right? So, really grateful for that communication that they've been sending and their partnership, but we need to just continue to keep that line of communication open. And if there are any challenges that we need to work through and any ideas and suggestions that they have, that we are open to considering those because it does take a partnership. So, just want you to reiterate that.
And we have a very strong and positive relationship with our city.
Yeah.
Walk zones, I, or no bus zones. I know my children at Smokey Row were part of the no bus zone for several years and we walked to school. I see children walking all the time to school and some are crossing busier roads. Have we worked or is the city working with us to establish just standard, safer walk routes for students in general?
Well, I would say that the, the city has, I would say continued to examine that. That's why, as you know, and just recently, we received a communication from the city that, that indicated that they were doing certain things to actually improve children's ability to walk and cross intersections and so forth. And that, that's really came from them. We didn't ask them for that, not that we wouldn't, but I mean, that just as an example where they've been very proactive in, in this community to, and you hear all the time about creating a walkable community. They, they're including children in that comment, not, not just bike paths and so forth. Although, bike paths are helpful for student, you know, children as well. And we, for years, have encouraged, or encouraged walking really and by, we have installed additional bike racks. We, in some cases, we have put sidewalks in from a, an adjoining neighborhood so that, you know, that they, there's a path to school on a sidewalk. And as you noted, any number of children have already either walked or biked to school.
My last question. With the bus driver shortage, what would that turnaround look like if we had enough drivers? I know you'd already said we would first begin by reducing the double and triple routes. Would it be this school year? Would it be midsemester? How quickly could we turn it around if we had the capacity to do so?
On the double routes, that could, and I would anticipate would happen as we obtain drivers. We would, there'd be a point where if we hired an, you know, additional driver, it might, it'll take more than just one, but, but if we get a certain number of additional drivers, we would discontinue the double route and, 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 because we would have enough drivers to run additional routes. It may not be as simple as just this person, and it's not that simple. It's not as simple as if one person was running two routes, we'd hire somebody to run one of them. And that's part of the challenge because it really kind of requires almost reconfiguring the routes, which, all of them, because you, it starts to move, move students from one bus to another and so forth. So, it's not, it's a kind of a complicated process, but that's what we would do. So, I would, that would not be timed with a semester or summer or something like that. I would suspect that with, if there was a change in, in the no bus zones, that more likely, I believe, would come at a, at, you know, the beginning of school or possibly a semester.
We, we won't ask the Transportation Department that question for at least about four or five weeks.
Because that would take an entire rerouting.
I know we have a shortage of bus drivers. What about substitutes for the bus drivers when they're sick? Will we have anybody in the wings?
No. Well, that, in a, in a, in our transportation operation, we would, we have, would have, if we had enough drivers, let's refer, we refer to them as permanent substitute bus drivers. We have not been able for as long as I can remember, if we have a, need a bus driver, we don't have a pool out there that you could just call them that morning or night before and ask them to come in. I would say like substitute teachers. It doesn't work out with bus drivers. You know, they, they're, they're just not, they've not been out there for 25 years as far as I know. And we might have one or two that would do something like that, but, but not enough. So, with 180 routes, we, we, we might have eight or 10 drivers that come in and they're unassigned because we, you're trying to estimate how many of the 180 are not going, not going to be able to work this morning for whatever reason, illness or whatever. And so, it's not an exact science and, but that's how, that's how it works. And that's why when we say we would hire at least 40 drivers, I, I'm sure our transportation folks, if they could hire more than, the 40 is just, just to cover all the routes. We still have to, you know, do things to the extent that, and there is absenteeism, of course. So, we really would have a few more if they were available.
And, yes, Louise?
Just a quick question. I had some parents ask about with providing the breakfast in the morning, will it negatively impact the lunch situation budget-wise? You know, last year, how we covered lunches, is that going to change any of those kinds of things?
No, it's not going to change any of those things.
Thank you.
Do students pay for breakfast or is that included in the?
I knew you was going to ask that.
I know. And I just, and I had been thinking about it and I should have said it.
I, I believe that breakfast is, is at no cost. And, and at the moment, so is the lunch. So, that, that's, is a change directly as a result of pandemic.
Thank you. Any other questions? Excellent. Okay. Well, we're ready to take a vote. All those in favor of supporting a resolution setting minimum distance for no bus zones signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Carmel Police School's substitute teacher pay. Dr. Oestreich.
Good evening, President Spanenberg, members of the board, Dr. Bearsford. We are recommending this evening that we increase our substitute teacher pay daily rate by $5 across the board. That would include our daily classroom substitute teachers, some of our special education substitute teachers, and in addition, our retired teachers who also substitute teach for us. Currently, we offer $75 a day for our regular subs, $85 a day for our special, some of our special education subs, and then $100 a day for our retired teachers. So, we'd like to increase that by $5. Recently, Zionsville and Westfield increased their substitute teacher pay from $75 to $80 a day, and I'd recommend that we stay in line with our neighboring school districts. HSE, Noblesville, Westfield, Zionsville are all at $80 a day, and I recommend that we are consistent with those neighboring districts in order to continue to retain our substitute teachers. Currently, we are not in as huge of a need as we are for bus drivers with our substitute teachers. We were very successful last year with many thanks to our Carmels Moms Group, who were able to recruit quite a few on our behalf and we got them in here and we did very, very well. In addition, we had 20 substitute teachers that did not substitute teach due to COVID last year but are coming back this year. We have another 25 substitute teachers that we're onboarding this week and next week. So, overall, we're in good shape. We can always use more substitute teachers, but at this time, we're, we should be off to a positive start and I want to remain positive by recommending this increase. So, at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Oestreich. So, we have before us a recommendation to approve an increase in the substitute teacher pay by $5. May I get a motion on the table? Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Discussion. Okay. Well, clearly you did an excellent job explaining the rationale and I guess we're ready to take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the recommendation to increase substitute teacher pay by $5 in Carmel Police Schools, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the highlight of the evening, our workshop topic. We have our school safety update and to that, we turn to Mr. Woodward.
Okay, thank you. We can't talk safety without talking about COVID. Last year was extremely difficult, I think, for everybody nationwide. We're no different. Following guidelines that were changing, it seemed weekly, sometimes daily. One thing I can say is that I'm, I'm proud that we're one of a handful of schools in the state that didn't have an extended shutdown. We were able to pretty much start on time and maintain throughout the year. There's a pretty big lift on our administrators. We see the same thing this year. Right now, our updated guidance is on the website for the public. I know the board has likely seen it. I can say that every Thursday, we have a briefing from the Indiana State Department of Health. We expect pretty much every Thursday to get new information that's going to guide our, our response, some of it we are ready for, and we'll see how that plays out through the school year. I want to talk about, Colleen, can I walk? Is this working? Okay, I don't know, how about now? I want to talk about my philosophy with regards to school safety. To me, it's important to have a well-trained staff and student body. I mean, that's the pillar of a response for school safety. It's important that we do have, we have updated all of our emergency preparedness plans. They're all based on state and national best practices. It's important to lean on those for training. It's important to utilize those in a crisis. Bottom line is though, in the first couple of minutes of a crisis, do you know what to do? And so, it's important we train our staff. It's important we train our students. So, I'm going to say it repeatedly, well-trained staff and student body. We want them to be empowered. We say drip, drip, drip. That means we don't just do the convocation at the beginning of the school year and say, this is your safety plan, good luck, remembering that in December. It's important that we are continually reminding people about safety in our schools and that we're changing a culture within our schools to make it, make school safety a priority. We've updated facilities throughout the school corporation, cameras, communications, et cetera. We'll talk a little bit more about those. We have 33 certified school safety specialists in our schools. The School Safety Specialist Academy is a program out of the Department of Education. It requires five days of training on the fundamentals of school safety. Now, they also have to do two additional days of training every single year because the threats to our schools change and so do the responses. So, we have to learn lessons learned from every single year. So, we have 33 safety specialists. We have one in every building. All of our school resource officers get that training as well. I'm a big fan of that program because that's where I was the director of that program for 14 years before coming here. Seems like just yesterday I came, but it's been, it's been enjoyable. Our safety specialists have monthly meetings. It's extremely important that when we have lessons learned in our buildings, that we're all sharing those lessons learned. We all learn from one another. We align our programs throughout CCS. Those meetings have been fantastic as far as moving the, the dial forward with safety throughout the corporation. We also have working towards SROs in every building. That can take our plans to scale. It's difficult with 15 buildings to make sure that everyone is aligned and everyone is doing exactly what they can. In 2019, the public voted to have an SRO in every building and so, we implemented a three-year plan. We are in year two and by next year, by fall of next year, we will have an SRO in every building. Why a three-year plan? Because when you're adding, ultimately, you'll have about 21 SROs throughout the corporation because we have multiples in the high school. You can't just pluck 21 officers off the street. You have to have so long on the street to be eligible as part of this program. And so, as CPD hires, then we move forward with the SROs in our buildings. So, it's kind of a train and replace. The plan is actually to start interviewing for the final SROs late fall, early winter of this year and have them complete the training that's necessary so they'll be ready to go in the fall. Our SROs all complete assessments of our buildings, walkthroughs, physical assessments, looking for everything from slips, trips and falls to access control issues. What can we do to improve? I cannot tell you enough how important it is to have someone in each building whose sole responsibility and whose sole thought is safety every day. It is extremely valuable. We have with us tonight the head of our SROs, Adam Miller. Adam coordinates all the SROs and so, please give a hand to Adam Miller.
Thank you very much, David. I'm Adam Miller. I've been with the Carmel Police Department. I'm in my 27th year. Up until January, though, I spent all that time on the street in various positions, learning quite a bit. But I have to say, since I've been here full-time in January, that was part of the referendum. I mean, here, we're adding so many SROs, it's very important to us to make sure you've got the best trained SROs possible. And that's part of my role, working with the board, working with the staff, and very excited to do this. And I have to say, since January, I've only been seven months into it full-time, it's one of the most rewarding positions I've had in the 26, going on 27 years at the Police Department. So, thank you very much for making that happen. Instead of me talking too much, we have a great video I want to play that gives you an idea what it's like, the day in the life of an SRO and what it's all about.
Hey! How you doing, honey?
Hi.
Hi. An SRO's job has many roles, but it has one big responsibility and that responsibility is to keep our kids safe. I generally start my day at Carmel Middle School because that's where my office is. My job entails a lot of relationship building with students and staff at Carmel Middle and the feeder elementary schools. I have been a Carmel Police Officer. I'm finishing my 12th year now and I am in my fifth year as a school resource officer. An SRO is a highly-trained law enforcement officer who follows a triad concept and a model. And that model is where the SRO acts as a law enforcement officer, mentor and a teacher in the school setting. It's important for people to realize, I'm a school resource officer, not a student resource officer. I'm a resource for students, staff and parents, all a part of the community that makes up each individual school that I have. The school resource unit has developed a curriculum over the years for kindergarten through grade 12 that focuses on school safety, drug, alcohol, tobacco, education, communication, how to be better communicators, cyberbullying and social media and the pitfalls that some of those topics can entail. One of the most important things- One of the most important things about being an SRO is that relationship-building element. Safety is about relationships and how that manifests itself. For me, if I'm that trusted adult for our kids, they're going to feel more comfortable coming to me when there are issues at school, when there are issues at home, and the same thing. If parents know that I have a relationship with their kids, sometimes they reach out to me and let me know that their kids are experiencing different challenges at home or out in the community. So it also, sometimes kids will come in and let me know when their friends are struggling, and that way, we can then get support and wrap services around those kids who are struggling. There is a common misconception that when I encounter people and parents in the community, they'll say, I hope you don't know my student, or I hope you haven't had interactions with my student. And I say, no, that's the exact opposite. I said, my, my goal and my job is to get to know all of our students and to support them in the ways they need to be supported. Sometimes I help the students who are struggling with behavioral issues, and sometimes I'm working with kids who don't have any behavioral issues. All students need support. They just need it in different ways. The role of a good SRO is to be a good listener, a good communicator, helping, helping kids to make good decisions, and being that positive role model that they can look to, especially in times of need. For me, it's important that my kids know that I love them. Right? That's the first thing. And from that, relationships are developed. I always tell the kids and parents, the kids, they're like my children. So sometimes I have to correct their behavior. Sometimes I love on them, but they always know that I have high expectations for them, and I hold them accountable.
And some of the mementos different kids have gotten me over the years, framed pictures of us together, little swans made from hamburger wrappers, things made in pottery and ceramics classes.
I love my job. I love my students. I love the opportunity to help make a difference in their lives and to help them on their journey to being successful individuals.
I thought it was much better for you guys to see what we do. David talked a little bit about why it's taken a three-year process to get all the SROs in all the buildings. With our Police Department, it's standard policy, you can't go to any specialty unit until you've had two years' experience with us. Many of us have had a lot more than two years' experience, but that's our minimum. We're not just putting untrained people in the schools. You have to have your minimum time on the department to apply. You have an interview process. We go through, they're interviewed by us. We have some CCS staff on that board as well. It's a collaborative effort to find the best people to make SROs, best police officers. And once we do that, it's not just about putting an SRO in a school. We take our time and assess the personalities of the admin at the different schools to find the best SRO and match them up with the schools, so we set them up for success. And obviously, this video is pre-COVID because the number-one thing that's been missing for a long time is that personal contact, especially with the little kids. They love us, and it's nice being able to go into a place where you get that response. The elementaries are amazing. We have those kids K through 5. Those are some very serious formative years. He talked about the triad concept. The law enforcement aspect, most of the time, I'd say 99% of the law enforcement side, you will never see. It's us working behind the scenes, safety planning. The school safety specialists, we're constantly working. ALICE is the program that we teach to help keep our staff and our students safe. All the staff gets that education. We teach the students, this is done on an annual basis, actually multiple times because it's not just once, but every time we hold a drill, we go back and assess, was that drill effective? So the ALICE concepts, we teach that. That's behind the scenes, but what's really important, as you saw with Officer Brodnax, is that relationship building, the mentoring, the triad. That's what we really thrive upon, to build that relationship with these kids, especially in the early years. Then when they go to middle school and on to high school, it's so important for them to have that relationship built with law enforcement in a time of non-conflict. We are so fortunate here at Carmel to have that ability. This year, we at least have, we won't have all the elementaries covered this year, but we at least have one SRO per two elementaries. So there's a lot more personal contact. Next summer, we're going to round that out. Every elementary will have an SRO. Every middle school already has one, and we have four at the high school. A lot of opportunities for those kids to interact in a very positive way. The third part of the triad, when we talk about the guest instructing, we get into the classes. We help teach, especially at the middle school and high school level. We get in there and we can share how important it is to pay attention maybe in that algebra class. You don't think you need it right now, but it's going to come in pretty handy 20 years later. But we're able to share some ideas and how it relates to real life, we're able to connect with these kids. And like Officer Brodnax mentioned, we do have a curriculum all the way through that we teach that's really important in the elementary and middle school years, setting them up for success in high school. So we really, the educator, we call that the guest instructor, informal counselor, the mentoring aspect, they're on the bottom here for a reason. That's our, that's our foundation. That's what SROs do for Carmel Clay Schools. Every single SRO that we have, they love kids. They love being that mentor. They love helping out. And the law enforcement side, we love to keep them safe. We want to keep the staff safe, the kids safe. And like he mentioned, we are a school resource officer, so it's not just the kids and staff. We're here for all the parents as well. Anytime, we field tons of phone calls and emails, and we're just coming across a parent visiting the schools, asking questions. We're here to help. We're here to be that resource for you guys, for the students, and for the parents. So that's the important piece. I want you to understand what kind of resource you have in Carmel Clay Schools, and really appreciate what we can do for you.
While Adam has the mic, any questions for Adam from the board?
I mean, you're going to get sick of me saying this, but it amazes me when I go to a football game at the high school, the most popular people are the SROs, and you could spot them by all the middle school kids, all the elementary school kids, you know, coming over, say hi. To me, it's just such a great example of building a positive relationship. And I think, like we've heard, that relationships are important, and I have heard stories where the relationships allow the officer to de-escalate what could have been a very tense situation. And by just knowing the kid, you know, it takes it all down. So thank you very much for everything that you do, and we are grateful to Carmel Police Department and all of our SROs. We have the best SROs. They are amazing, and thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up real quick because I've personally seen, I want to let you know, you talk about de-escalation, it's amazing. We've seen some kids who are having a bad day, whether they're not responding to the staff, and I'm talking about teachers or counselors, maybe even destroying the room. But when that SRO comes in, because they've formed that relationship in a time of non-conflict, the student totally settles down and warms up to the SRO, and that diffuses the situation because that's a positive relationship. And I've seen it firsthand, and it's really neat to see when, when it happens.
Yes. Can you explain what kind of training the SROs go through? Because I know it's not just the two weeks, or the internship, or the time that's prior, but you continue to do professional development, and you have your own organization. So could you go into some of that?
Absolutely. So I'll give you the example because we brought three new SROs on this summer. And we attend the state conference in ZROA, that's the Indiana School Resource Officer Association. It's a conference. We bring in a lot of really good speakers, and they really get in some good topics that we're able to take back to our schools and teach that. Then we also attend the NASRO, the National Organization for School Resource Officers. Again, now we get the resources of teachers and instructors from all over the country, people that were at Parkland, people that the principal of Columbine taught at our state conference. So we're getting this information firsthand from people that have actually been there to help us understand what it takes so we don't have that tragedy here, or God forbid we do, we know how to respond to it. On top of that, brand-new SROs attend a 40-hour basic course, and that's really dives into understanding the adolescent brain, understanding what schools are and how the schools function. So we're not just policing schools. We actually understand the school corporation. We understand learning. And we're not teachers, but we do try to understand the adolescent brain. It's very, it's one of the biggest things we need to learn early on because so much trauma can happen if you're not properly trained, if you don't know how to communicate with those kids. We spend a lot of time working on that to understand how to bond with those kids. We mentioned the Indiana School Safety Specialist Academy. Every one of us go through that. It's another 40-hour course. That's just the initial, but then we have continual training, both with the Police Department, but we attend the conferences every year, both the national and state conferences, so we continue to get education through that. We attend schools if we find those outside of the conferences. We'll attend those, and we'll come back and we'll teach the rest of the SROs what we learned. So it's a continual process. We have a base amount of training, quite a bit, actually, but then we continue to expand on that. We're never satisfied that we, we don't know everything, so we're constantly working to learn more. We reach out to communities when a tragedy does happen. We learn from that. We bring those people in. We get educated on what happened, what can be done better or different, to make sure we're prepared for if anything like that ever does happen.
I just want to speak to the approach that our Carmel community and our CPD take with regards to our school resource officers. I know I've sat down at the State House, and many people have spoken, or many people spoke to the effect that an SRO is either, it doesn't require the training that we do, which shocked me because you really do have this triad of responsibility and understanding a student and understanding the child, the brain, and the development is so integral in what you do each and every day in our schools. So I guess it's just a big thank you for what you do, and thank you for really placing such an emphasis on training and matching the right SRO to the right school because personalities, it plays such an important part in that relationship. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you. You bring up a very good point because we see on the media, especially if it hits social media, there is a difference between just officers working in the school and SROs. SROs are highly, highly trained. We're carefully selected, and we're specifically trained to do that job. That's very different than just having an officer work part-time in a school. And I think when you see some of those horrible videos on social media, they may call them SROs because that's what we think of as officers in the school, but it's important to understand the difference between SROs and just police working in the school. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We might have more as it continues, so don't go far.
Thanks again to Adam Miller, please.
So we update our safety plans yearly, and we do that along with our SROs and our school safety specialists. So you have plans. They're all in a binder. They, you can sit on a shelf. Again, who's, what do you do with it? How's the training go with that? It's important that our people know what to do with it. This year, we have trained all new staff, well, all new staff who come onboard with Carmel Clay Schools, spend an afternoon with myself and Lieutenant Miller, talking about the fundamentals of school safety and what we expect. And it's a broad range. However, for staff who are currently here, this year, we have trained all cafeteria staff, all maintenance staff, all bus drivers. Now, we have gaps. We have work to do, but we're getting there. Training can't be talking at you. Like that's, we just can't tell you, here's what to do. So I'm going to show you something that has actually been, these are developed through, again, Department of Education. Now, everyone put yourself in the seat of the, of the secretary and the administrator in this scenario.
Hi, how can I help you today?
Hi, I'm here to pick up my son Isaac.
And what's his last name?
His last name is Baker.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Ms. Davis, this is Heather. Would you send Isaac Baker to the office, please? His father's here to pick him up. Thank you.
Is this going to take long? I'm in a hurry. It's 2:55. I need to get my son.
He's on his way down. It'll only take a few minutes. You're welcome to have a seat while you wait.
Oh, no, 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 no. I don't think so. He is not going home with you. Hi, Heather. How are you? Can he call Isaac down? He's going home with me for the weekend.
You're not taking him. I'm taking him, and I'm not asking, I'm telling. Now, where is my son?
Don't talk to her like that.
I'll talk to her anyway. I want to talk to her.
Mr. Perkins! Mr. Perkins!
See, I mean, I'm, I'm working my butt off here to try and provide, and you are just not there.
What is going on?
Look, they're arguing, and they both want their son, and I don't know what we're going to do. It's worse. They're getting worse.
Okay.
This is ridiculous. We're not going to do this.
Well, you're being ridiculous. What would, you can't do any, what, what, what can't you do, huh?
Mom, Dad?
So we can, we can talk to our front office staff. We can talk to our administrators about a situation, but until they've kind of put themselves in it, it helps you think through it. We do have custody issues in our buildings, and it's extremely difficult to deal with those right at the bell, and you have kids being released, and you have an issue going on in the office. What do you do? And so we talk through those scenarios with them. We have scenarios for health crises. We have them for severe weather, et cetera. So we urge our buildings to spend the first couple of minutes of their staff meetings talking about scenarios and reviewing school safety issues. You can talk to them again. Nothing's better than muscle memory, drills. So the law requires that we have one man-made occurrence drill per semester. We do two. We do a tornado drill every semester, a fire drill every month, and an earthquake drill every year. We can do a substitution for fire drills. Let me ask you all, and just think in your head, think of the time, the last time you saw on the news that a student had died in a building because of a fire at school. Not in my lifetime, not one time in my lifetime. So the legislature has allowed us to substitute up to twice a semester, man-made occurrence because we know there has been man-made violence, there's been violence in our building, not our buildings, but throughout the United States. And so it's important that we adjust and that we are able to make that substitution as necessary. Yet, it's still important to do fire drills. This is Carmel High School just a couple of years ago. This was December 26th. I think I'd been here like two months at this point, and this was the door that students came in for Dad's Club. There were kids in that building, even though it was in December 26th. But they couldn't go out. And so it's important that when we talk about K-12 safety, we're talking about K-life safety. What happens if you have an issue at a mall? What happens if you're at a theater? What happens if you have an issue at home? We want our kids to know how to respond. It's really interesting to watch. We, we have video, and I can't show it because kids are in it, but it's of the wrestling room. The wrestlers were practicing that night, and they all hear an explosion and they freeze. And then the fire alarm goes off, and they all did exactly what they were supposed to do because they'd been trained, muscle memory. They knew what to do. But it was a big wake-up call for us after hours. We have people using our buildings after hours. They rent the facilities. You have your scouts, you have your Dad's Clubs, you have other programs. So what training do they get? So we've provided this information and posted this throughout our school corporation. So if you're in there after hours, you're able to identify where the safe zone is with regards to severe weather. You're able to know where the AED location is. You're able to know the address of your building because frankly, they don't know the address if they're calling 911. Also, when talking about school safety, I see it as a continuum, and it goes from prevention at one end to a response at the other. And so as we work along that continuum, it's really important that we're able to provide students what they need, and sometimes access to mental health is an issue for our students. Particularly, let's say you're trying to get, a family is trying to get a student an appointment to see a mental health counselor, but they can only do it after work or after school, and so sometimes they're talking six weeks before they can get in. So again, through the referendum, we now have a sentient mental health providers in every school. Now, this still is run by the parents. It's just like having a counselor somewhere else, but it's there. It eliminates the barriers. It eliminates the time, the travel, et cetera. We also have created a county-wide mental health response team. So if there is a serious crisis that would overload our own resources, we could get help from neighboring districts. So I can say that we have helped neighboring districts after a major crisis. Teachers passing away impacts their whole staff. The staff is uncomfortable doing some of the work. The staff is uncomfortable doing some of the work. We're able to help and vice versa. But I want to talk about that other end of the response. So we have the prevention where we want to talk, we want to eliminate barriers. We want all the kids to feel included. We want everyone to love their school because let's face it, that prevents violence, right? That stuff is important. Well, I live in a world of it got to the other end. And so if there were a major crisis in our buildings, whether it's violence, severe weather, could be a gas leak and we have to move all of our students from point A to point B, we needed to identify where and how we do that. You don't want to use another school because then you're creating two crises. You're creating your own crisis where you have to leave, then you're creating another one at the building that you go to. The saying is, police own a crime scene, firemen own the accidents. We are in charge of the students. So we have identified multiple reunification locations. Now, they're confidential and safety plans are exempt from public record, but they're confidential because the moment that something happens, it would be so flooded, we wouldn't be able to get the buses there. So we will be able to get students to the location and walk the family through, reunify their, the student with the family. We think we can do it pretty quickly. We actually have done small-scale drills to practice this. What are the holes in it? We can do it. We're prepared to do it, even if we don't have internet access, even if we don't have access to Power School. We have the ability to make this. This is an example. This is not one of our locations, but you basically have a facility where parents are somewhere other than the students. It's very controlled and we basically have a checkout system. The reason I bring that up is because if this, obviously this is posted, I want all parents to take a minute and check their emergency contacts. Make sure emergency contacts are updated. Make sure you've signed up for emergency text alerts. Make sure you have the information that we need to get ahold of you during a crisis. Again, I live at the other end of the spectrum where a problem has occurred and what do we do? We have bleeding control kits that are being placed in every classroom throughout the school corporation. They're also located at every AED location in our schools. So if you're, again, after hours and you don't have access to a classroom, this is at an AED location. Now, these were donated by the Carmel Fire Department. And so I cannot thank the Carmel Fire Department enough for their initiative. In fact, they are spearheading an effort to put these type of resources in all of our public buildings throughout Carmel. Just a fantastic initiative by them. Another thing that's great about this, you'll notice there's a QR code on here. Scan the QR code and your training is there. It tells you exactly how to do it. Now, that's no substitute for really doing it. And so now that we're released mostly from COVID restrictions, we're going to be able to train our staff in person so they understand how to use it. Now, what's in here? There's scissors, there's gloves, there's gauze. Most importantly, life-saving wise, there's a tourniquet. Most people have no idea how to use a tourniquet, nor should they based on your typical day. However, we know that it saved lives. We know that it saved lives in schools. We know it saved lives in schools near us. And so we have these, they're currently in every classroom, but all of our schools just recently did an inventory for their school safety checklist. And as we had some teacher turnover, some of them took their bleed kits with them. So we'll have those replaced here in the next week or two for anyone that has a gap. We've updated our facilities I mentioned previously. You know, if you've ever been in a band room during school, you know that you cannot hear if there was a PA announcement. And so we've been going through Ron Farn, who is just fantastic, has worked with us to install in our lunchroom and our orchestra areas, a blue siren basically. And it's pretty soft, so it's not, it hasn't, it won't trigger a seizure, but it's noticeable. And so we know if that's on, there's an announcement going on that we've not, that is unexpected. We've also included or improved our pleasant systems. We had a $100,000 grant from the Department of Homeland Security that we wrote last year that increased and improved our camera coverage throughout Carmel Clay Schools. Now, we talked about training and getting it drip, 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 making sure that, you know, we understand what to do in a crisis. And so we do audits. These are low-stress, high-impact audits where we can talk to a teacher at any point and ask them, this happens, what would you do? In fact, everyone would love to watch Greg DeWald love run a lockdown over at Clay Middle because Officer DeWald grabs a staff member when it's time for a lockdown drill. Says, okay, it's lockdown drill time. What do we do? How do we call it? And they walk through how to do that. We empower all of our teachers. We empower everyone in our buildings to call a lockdown if they think something is needing a lockdown. If they're concerned about something, they're empowered. And people question that because they think you need to run to the office and make sure the principal's okay with it. That's, those are life-saving moments. On the flip side, anyone, anywhere can pull a fire alarm, right? Anyone, anywhere. How many kids have died from fire in our lifetimes? So we urge and empower our staff to be able to call those lockdowns. Our goal, empowerment. You know, it's, it's great to see them when I walk up to them and they're, they're, they may not know me and they're confused as to what their next step is. And then when they, when it clicks as to what they should be doing, it's great because you know that, that they're thinking it. We weren't able to do this last year because of COVID. We want to do it this year. We ran a parent safety academy. We actually have had three rounds of it. So I need to update. We have a little, few more than 32 graduates. But this program, we brought parents in. They had to apply, they had to get background checks. But we talked to them about our safety initiatives and we trained them on some of the basics and we run them through scenarios. And I'll tell you the value, they give us a ton of good input. In fact, we adjusted our, our severe weather response for afternoons because when does severe weather hit typically in Indiana? When do we usually have a tornado in the state of Indiana? Between four and eight o'clock. Couldn't pick a worse time for us with dismissal. So we were able to adjust our actual dismissal protocols based on some things parents gave us. We also do a piece of that where we ask them to identify safety gaps in our schools. Now, we don't want them to tell the whole class, but we ask them to write them down because they know things we don't. Kids know things we don't. I remember while conducting an audit for DOE, I was at my alma mater and I told them, hey, there's a door that I can pop open in this place. You know, 25 years ago I could. I'd break in, play basketball with some buddies, right? I hope no one, DJ, I hope it's too late to arrest me for such a thing. They said, no, there's, there's no way. All the, all the facilities have been upgraded over the years. So we walked to that door, three tugs and it was open. I said, I guarantee every kid here, at least the ones who are maybe wanting to get in for one reason or another, they know. So I want our kids to tell us and our kids, I want our parents to tell us. Those are things we need to know. We have gaps. We have gaps. We need to address them. We need to find them. We also have more information for parents. We have information about vaping. We have information about internet safety. Our release information and our severe weather information is also on this parent resource center. You go to school safety on the website, there are tons of these here and we will continue to push these out again, drip, drip via social media. Emily Bauer's been great about looking at these and knowing when and how to push these out. Again, drip, drip, drip. We've instituted an anonymous reporting system throughout Carmel Clay Schools. Statistic, approximately 80% of people, students, knew a violent act was going to occur in their schools before it happened and yet didn't speak up because either they lacked trust with a staff member or they didn't want to be associated with it. No one wants to think that you're implicated in something even if you know of it or you don't think it's going to happen. So we've instituted a completely anonymous program where our students can go on and basically tell us something that's, that's happening in their buildings. I can tell you right now, there are three students alive because of this program. Now, not because of, of violence. They were planning to take their own life. Though the one that always sticks with me because it's not a Carmel student, so I feel very comfortable telling this one, but a Carmel student reported it. He was online, playing a video game late at night and you know they're on, they've got their headphones on, they're talking to someone somewhere else. And the person on the other side was talking about what they were planning to do to themselves. This report comes in, our SROs get it, I get them, our administrators get them. And our, our law enforcement was able to communicate with law enforcement in the state of Florida who went to this house and knock and talk and actually intervened, a student who was about to take his own life. The program works. Training works. We have more to do. We have, we have several different initiatives that, I'll be frank with you, I'll be frank with the board, we're a year behind because we lost a year because of COVID. As I came in, I met with Dr. Beresford and we talked about our, our goals. We're not there because for the last year, we've been chasing our tails with all types of things with regards to the COVID pandemic. So we have a lot yet. We need to train our subs. We need to do some, I talk about training everyone. I want our subs to be trained with regards to safety. We still have camera updates to do. We talked about a parent academy. Officer Chef, who I think most people know, he's done a great job. He's had a student safety committee. We need to bolster their, our student safety committees. Kids know. They know what we should know. So we need to work with them to continue to do it. You know, we'll keep plugging away. Nothing will happen overnight, but as I always say, if we can do one thing, do it completely and move to the next thing. Over, over time, we're going to have what I hope to be the premier program for school safety in the United States. But that's the goal, but we're not there. Any questions for me from the board?
Well, first, thank you so very much for the thorough coverage of, excuse me, what we have done, what we are doing and what we need to continue to do. We are so thankful that you decided to join our team instead of the IDOE's team and you've made such a tremendous impact in helping to utilize the funds the community has provided through the safety referendum to really orchestrate a very well-rounded safety program for all of our students and staff. With that, I'm going to open the floor up for questions and then go from there.
I just want to say ditto. I'm very proud to have you as our safety specialist here in the Carmel Schools. I feel like you've really stepped up and done a lot with student services and I very much appreciate that. We stole you from the state of Indiana and I'm very happy we did that. Thank you.
Thanks.
I would just put out there a recommendation to all parents that are interested in the Parent Safety Academy. It is a fantastic program. Like you said, it gives you insight into things that I had no clue about and just the ones, the one that I was at, I mean, the input coming the other way, like you said, I think is invaluable as well because like you said, kids and parents know things that, that we don't. And it is a great program. I'm sorry we lost it last year, but I'm glad to hear it's coming back.
So we touched on the after-hours usage of the school buildings. And what type of training do Carmel Dad's Club, you know, volunteers get or scouting volunteers? How does that work?
Yeah, great, great question. So we were starting to actually get some pretty good inroads. We had met with Carmel Dad's Club a couple of times. They actually helped us develop that after-hours guide and they talked to their staff about to look for it every time they go in. As far as in-depth training, we're not there yet, but we need to be. Again, we lost a year due to COVID and so it's, it's one of those things that we need to continue to look at.
And as, I know we've lost a year to COVID, but prior to that, there were other programs that were provided from the SROs as well as student services for the community. I've attended several smoking and vaping and, and just a variety of really good public service announcement-type trainings for parents. Are we looking to continue with that this year or are we just really trying to focus on the parent academy?
No, we want to continue those, but a lot of times attendance at some of those programs is low. I mean, they've been, people have been working all day. It gets, it gets late and sometimes they feel like, I'm going to go learn some bad news tonight, which is why we, so we'll continue to do them as open houses invite us. I know there's a, a mental health fair at the high school and I don't know the exact dates yet, but I know the SROs are booked for some, some highlights there with some different programs. But that's really why we moved to an online format, short, but informative clips of information just because attendance often is, is low at those programs.
And I do like that online version. So thank you very much. That was, that is quite an asset for our community. Do we have other questions? Let me just look over mine, make sure there... You also mentioned camera updates and some of these other, I guess, hardscape updates that need to be made. What timeframe are we looking at that we are hoping to have that done? And is supply an issue because of COVID?
Um, yeah, supply can be an issue, but it's not really been, been our issue necessarily. Really, so we, we received the grant funding last year. We definitely had some hiccups. I'd been out for a little bit, which held us up a little bit. As far as a timeline, I can't say that we have one because in reality, these updates, just like a safety plan, are going to be ongoing. So if you think about a camera, for example, a camera that was the best of, the best available five years ago is no longer the best available. In fact, some of them really struggle. And so it's a process of adding and still, and yet replacing. And so I, I can't necessarily say, oh, we'll be, we'll wash our hands of this in six months. I think it's going to be an ongoing process for us.
Thank you. And just a really big applause to our SROs. My kids think they're rock stars. And I think most do and I love the relationship that I have with each of our SROs as well. So. Do we have other questions or comments? Well, Mr. Woodward, thank you very much for bringing all of this to our attention and for your thorough coverage of our safety plans. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda, we have reports. Dr. Beresford, do you have a report to share this evening?
I do.
All righty.
Thank you for, thank you for this opportunity. First, I want to add, just add my thank you to Mr. Woodward over there for all the work he's been doing and we were very fortunate to have him join our team and, and he's a pretty humble guy, but he is one of the best safety experts definitely in the state of Indiana and he's got a national reputation as well. And his leadership has made a difference here and really appreciate him and, and I am just so encouraged, you know, it was, you know, three years ago where I was setting a table and I believe with Nikki McNally back there who ran our school safety referendum with Laura Jared and, and we were, we were dreaming about the day that we could have a school resource officer in every, in every school. And, and we were talking about, you know, all the different layers of, of safety that we could do and to see these actually happen and to see that, that plan is on schedule, you know, that we'll have our kids and our, you know, that one school safety expert that's sole focus is to keep our kids and our staff and people safe is just a dream come true. So it's, I love this meeting every year because I just see the pieces coming together. And, and also I think it's very clear that it's not a situation where we've got a list of things, we're going to check all the boxes. It's going to be ongoing and going on and on and on because we never stop. We're relentless about finding out the best ways that we can keep our kids safe. So thank you very much and thank you too back there. My super intense report, start with a COVID-19 update. I want to start by first off apologizing to the hundreds of people who have sent me emails regarding the district's mask protocol in particular and some other issues. My incoming email tipped over 500 last week and, and I could battle it down to 350 at the, and then I'd get up the next morning, it's back over 500. So it's going to be impossible to respond to everyone, but, but I just want to apologize for that and right now it's just, there's just too many of them. At this time, our masks remain highly recommended for vaccinated and unvaccinated students and staff and the board, you know, chose to mask up tonight to, you know... and staff and the board, you know, chose to mask up tonight to, you know, show support for that. At this time, masks remain highly recommended for vaccinated and unvaccinated students and staff, though currently not required at Carmel Clay Schools. We're prepared to update the mask protocol at any time based on school, district, community, and county data. As of today, Hamlin County still remains in the yellow advisory level and we particularly focus in on the seven-day positivity rate. We've noticed that creeping up and, and keeping an eye on that. Also, we work with the Hamlin County Health Department to track the number of positive cases by age group in our two primary zip codes. It's that August 29th through August 5th is the most recent numbers we have. We hope to get the, the, the next week up tomorrow, maybe. But in ages five through, excuse me, we had five cases in ages five through 15 in 46033 and four or less in 46032. The Indiana Department, State Department of Health, if it's under five, so four or less, they won't report it. So we don't know if it's a zero, one, two, or three, or four. And then we had four or less in the 16 to age, 16 to 18 age group. So we'll see if we get more information on that tomorrow as we, we try to monitor that. Once we get school in session, it's, we get better communication, we're able to kind of track positive cases much closer. And we can do that by school age and a lot of different factors. We also, as David mentioned, we're going to have the updated guidance for schools from the department tomorrow and their, their weekly webinar and we'll see what, what pieces we get out of that. If we do come to a point where we need to change our programming quickly, we'll communicate those changes immediately and whether it's the environment or other factors that would make us want to change the plan. David talked a little bit about quarantines and, and that those updates are, are going, but they could change and, which has been consistent for the last year and a half, that changes occur very quickly. Schools are required to report positive cases and close contacts to the Indiana State Department of Health. And they have a contact tracing team that will contact families, positive cases and families of close contacts. According to the current guidance, some students can avoid quarantines based on masks and social distancing. Vaccinated students and staff will not be required to quarantine if, if they would be exposed to someone who's tested positive. So just a little tidbit out there on the quarantine side. While we're not medical experts, keeping kids in school is something that we, feels extremely important. And so really the, the quarantines are problematic and, and it's a tough thing to cover. Also want to share vaccination information, just call 211 if you have not been vaccinated. And then also transportation, there is a federal order that everyone riding public transportation, which includes school buses, must wear a mask. So all the kids riding the bus tomorrow need to have a mask and that is a federal order. Probably most importantly, and if there's anything we want to communicate and keep telling all of our, our, our friends and neighbors and students is that if any individual has COVID-19 symptoms, if you're not feeling well, or if you've tested and you're waiting for the results from a COVID test, do not come to school. Remain home, contact your doctor or the Indiana Department of Health. And, and you know, all those cases should be reported to the Indiana State Department of Health. So that's kind of the, my, my COVID update for the moment. And then, like I said, we'll continue to do that. I know it's a hot topic and there's a lot of people feel strongly both ways and that's not new either. And so, but we'll, we'll keep working these, these environmental changes and, and make the appropriate changes as we need to. I wanted to report on new schools. If Roger looks tired and Ron, it was a race to the finish, but the new Carmel Elementary School and the Clay Center Road Elementary are ready to go for tomorrow. We still have quite a bit of punch list items to complete, but the teachers have their rooms ready and final prep is completed. And also wanted to inform, you know, the board and the public that there will not be construction going on during the school day while kids are in the building and learning. From now on, any construction things will be occurring after school gets out and I guess like a night shift, right? And that's how that's going to play out. So didn't want to throw a kudos out to Mr. McMichael and to Mr. Farren and really, you know, Principal Klinken Smith and, Klinken Smith, excuse me, and Turner. They have, they and their teams have just put in a ton of hours and several of us have had the opportunity to open schools and it is a exhausting adventure. It's, it's an awesome adventure, but it's exhausting and they've just done a real nice job working from making drawings on scratch paper to, to blueprints and then seeing those, those schools emerge from the ground. And just really, really special. They've turned out wonderfully and just really looking forward to this, this, seeing the, the kids, you know, in those new environments and, and learning and growing there. You guys pretty much covered all my transportation and no bus zones. I had a lot of kudos for that, but I think almost you hit me from both sides on that one. But I do want to say, much like Mr. Kirsten, I'm really thankful for our drivers, the ones who are sticking with us and, and driving because they're going to do extra routes to cover, you know, the areas of shortage. And, and they're just helping us out and they are stepping up to the plate and they do a great job. And they're a really neat community if you get to hang out with, with our, that group. I also want to give a shout to the city for helping with the crosswalks and assisting with no bus zones. And you are, I forget who mentioned the walkability part, but the city, what the city's done as a culture of Carmel to have walkable spaces and, and the efforts they've put in have been great. And when this came out, they immediately kind, you know, came up to the plate and said, "Hey, we, we're all on that and we've got things that we can do to help." And, and spoiler alert, we have, we may even have one city councilman who may be a crossing guard for us. I was contacted about that. So I really enjoy the, the relationship we have with the city and, and our partners there. I too wanted to shout out to our routers and staff who, who did all the hours to make, to make it work. Our building principals and staff are prepping for walkers and crossing guards and car riders and early buses and morning supervision and breakfast for early birds. And then also our parents, I think as Louise said, for, you know, for organizing neighborhoods with walking school buses and carpools and, and other creative solutions and those pieces. I've got just little snapshots along the way of what people are doing out there to, to work this problem. And I know I'm probably forgetting somebody, but, but this was a huge challenge and it was one where there were no good solutions. And I'm really grateful to everyone who is helping to make the best out of a bad situation. And, and we've, and we have actually already had several contacts. Dr. O might know of people from inside and outside the community who have expressed an interest in driving a bus. So what's, what's our numbers on that?
Yeah, we've had about 12 people reach out to us interested in driving a bus since the announcement of updating the school's start times and the buses. So we are following up with each and every one of them.
I thought, wow, what if we have a big rush like we did for the substitute teachers? And, but, and I will, you know, once, once again reiterate that if you can drive a SUV around, around about, you can drive a bus. So, so it's a, it is a good gig. Next one's just a little personal, but Brenda Cook has worked for 24 years in Carmel Clay Schools. She attended Orchard, now this is a little bit of her life history, a little bit. She attended Orchard Park Elementary, both Carmel and Clay Junior Highs and was a 1979 graduate from Carmel High School. And then she started working for Carmel Clay Schools in 1997 as a secretary at Smokey Row Elementary School. And then from there, in February 2006, she moved to the ESC and has supported our curriculum, instruction, and assessment team ever since. And so she completed her 24 years of service today and we had an open house for her earlier, but today was the last day, so we made a tunnel out there. And we clapped her out of the building this afternoon and just really grateful for her service in so many ways over all those years. And, and then she went out to her family who were waiting for her in a huge stretch limo. And so she hopped in the limo and, and we will miss Brenda, but she said she would sub sometimes and check in. And I know what you're going to say, "No, she is not interested in driving a bus." So my bell ringer is, is kind of a tradition of mine and, and I thought I'd just share it with the board, that on the first day of school, I always send out a quote of the day and I, I sent out the first, the same one on the first day. And it's never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed people can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Margaret Mead said that many years ago. And another thing that I, I share and is that school can only happen through the combined best efforts of all 2,200-plus employees, our people, who make up the CCS family. The complexity of making this happen is nothing short of magic in my book. It takes many, many hours of hard work by many, many people. And I'm not sure the rest of the world understands what are, all our people do and, and what it takes to make school happen. But I just want you guys to know, I couldn't be prouder of this team. And especially with the challenges of the summer and, and you know, the, I think we've had more issues, you know, trying to, in addition to trying to do the job that we, we need to do. And I just couldn't be prouder of this team. And I want you to know that they are the thoughtful, committed people who make a positive difference and change the world in a kind and loving way. And they do that for the children and families that we serve. So it's my open prayer that we have an incredible year full of love, laughter, and kindness. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Are there any questions this evening for Dr. Beresford? Do any board members have any reports that they would like to share? Okay, given that's the case, just two announcements. Tomorrow is our very first day of school. Please be very careful driving around the community because we have little ones and big ones driving cars and walking our, walking across streets. We wish everybody the very best and a very exciting 2021, 2022 school year. The next is our next board meeting on the 23rd of August. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.